Oh, I guess David can take it.
Got it?
I got it.
I've always heard that. That you can take it.
Oh, yeah.
I'm waiting for the feedback to come in. Darcy, we got feedback. Yeah, it's a normal, it's a normal tone of mine tonight, so it's fine. Thanks, Darcy. All right, let's call to order tonight's Eldorado City Commission meeting for January 4th, 2021. Do we have a roll call?
Mayor Young.
Do we have Tabitha?
Do we have Tabitha?
She's, she's trying to talk. Can you turn your volume up?
Okay.
Yeah.
Mayor Young, can you hear me?
Okay. Um, Mayor Young.
Here.
Commissioner Wilkinson.
Present.
Commissioner Battler.
Here.
Commissioner Lewis.
Yes.
Commissioner Guthrie.
Here.
All right, before we do invocation, I'm gonna let... There we go. Okay. For, uh, here for invocation tonight is Pastor Jordan Counts from the Park Avenue Baptist Church.
Great. Most gracious and awesome God, we thank you for the opportunity to serve you. We thank you that we are freely and wonderfully made. And Lord, we just give this time to you because you created service. You created representation. Lord, we, we just give it all to you in this year, in this meeting, for your hand, that your hand would guide us. And all we say and do as we make decisions that affect the many, may they honor you, may they give you glory. In Jesus' name we ask, amen.
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 Thank you. Would everyone please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, on the agenda tonight, we don't have any proclamations or recognitions. Uh, so we'll move on to personal appearances. Personal appearances are the opportunities for organizations or citizens to make special presentations before the city commission. Such appearances are scheduled in advance of the meeting by calling City Clerk Tabitha Sharp at 316-321-9100 by 5 o'clock PM the Tuesday preceding the meeting. Presentations are limited to 10 minutes, and any presentation is for information purposes only, and no action will be taken. Tabitha or David, I'm assuming we don't have any personal appearances tonight. So we'll move on to agenda item number seven, which is public comment. Persons who wish to address the city commission regarding items that are not on the agenda and that are under the jurisdiction of the city commission may do so when called upon. Comments on personnel matters and matters pending in court are not permitted. Speakers are limited to three minutes, and any presentation is for information purposes only, and no action will be taken. Do we have anyone here for pers- uh, public comment tonight? If you could please give us your name and address and...
Yes, good evening.
What is that?
I'm Christine Gilson. I live at 1305 Park Avenue, the corner of Park and Douglas. My husband and I want to thank the city commission for the rebuilding of Douglas Road this last year. We appreciate those who signed the petition, and I imagine even people who didn't sign the petition are mighty pleased with the results. Everybody who worked on the project from the city engineering department who oversaw the project to those who did all the phone and electrical wiring and storm drainage system and the actual road project were very professional, courteous, willing to ask a lot of questions. And we especially appreciate Pearson Construction and its workers who are always friendly and even as they worked really, really hard. The whole project was a bright spot in the middle of the pandemic, and we got to know our neighbors better as well. Besides, for me, it was a real education. I had no idea how roads were built, and it was actually a lot of fun. And I think the sidewalk is wonderful, and I think the kids going to Skelly probably think it is too. So, well done, everyone. We applaud you.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mother Gilson. Is there anyone else here for public comment? Move on to the next agenda, into the consent agenda. On tonight's consent agenda is the approval of the city commission minutes from November 16th, 2020, December 7th, 2020, and special commission minutes from November 18th, 2020, and December 2nd, 2020, and the approval of appropriation ordinance number 11-20 in the amount of $1,821,452.53. So I have a motion.
I move that the consent agenda is presented, be approved.
Second.
I have a motion to second it. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries 5-0. There's nothing in old business, so we're gonna dive right into agenda item number 12, new business, department presentations for fire and police. They're doing rock, paper, scissors in the back of their room, see who goes first.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. Tonight, I'd like to share with you what the Eldorado Fire Department did in 2020. Um, in 2020, we had 1,494 incidents. That was a decrease from 2019 of about 172 incidents. Um, basically, what you see on the screen here is a heat map that shows where our calls were plotted. The, the red spots are where we are more frequently, uh, respond to. This is all call types, service calls to fire calls to medical calls. We had 172 fire incidents. And then again, this is a heat map that shows where our call locations were. Fire incidents are calls where there is actually fire, so we actually have combustion. It does not include medical calls or, or service calls or anything like that. They're actual fire calls. We had 777 medical incidents. These include, um, medical assist with the ambulance. It includes car wrecks. It includes rescue calls. Um, of those incidents, you can see, um, for total incidents, we were down from 20 years past. Um, an interesting fact was, we did last year, um, have increasingly more fire calls than, um, we had in 2019. Um, 172 again in 2020, where we had 114 in 2019. But even with the pandemic, we showed a decrease in EMS calls and rescue calls. Uh, we contribute this mostly to, a lot of people weren't calling for the ambulance unless they really needed it. We didn't have a lot of the more minor medical calls towards the first of the year. I know EMS actually caught up towards the end of the year, but I think a lot of that was transport calls into Wichita, so... Um, responses by district. Um, Stations 1's response district within the city of Eldorado had 686 calls. Station 2, which is High Street in West, had 543 calls. Eldorado Township that we contract with had 105 calls. Prospect Township, which would be most of everything in our fire district to the east, had 113 calls. Uh, we had 47 mutual aid calls, so going and helping our neighbors. And again, that gets you the total of 1,494 calls. Uh, you'll see that our call types increased, uh, in Prospect Township, east of town, as well as assisting our neighbors. We had six more than 2019 helping our neighbors, so... Our response times, um, for emergency calls, uh, you can see in town, we decreased our times. Um, we try to have that under a five-minute response time when we met our goals within the city limits. Um, the response times, as far as our, um, remote areas, the county areas go, is kind of dependent on where we get sent. Um, in years past, that calls may have been closer to town, and this year they may be further, but we actually increased our response time, especially in Prospect Township. Prospect Township, we can go anywhere from six miles to eight mile, uh, six miles, um, south to eight miles east and still be in our district in Prospect Township. And then, uh, for mutual aid calls going out of our district to help our neighbors, we had an increase there. Um, that, again, maybe we helped Cassidy or Whitewater more this year than we helped Tuwanda, so it, it's kind of skews our average there. Our average response was with four personnel, and actually, that was up from 2019. We had a 3 point... Uh, 3.41, I believe, if my math's correct, for, uh, 2019 as a, um, average response personnel. Fire losses, again, we had a lot more fires, and we showed a, uh, a total fire loss of $729,909. This was an increase over 2019 of $300,000. Um, our pre-incident value was about five and a half million, and you can see, as far as the value goes, our fires, um, in the bottom diagram there, our fires, property value, um, of the locations where we had our fires were a lot less, so we didn't have any big, large, uh, occupancy-type fires. Funds generated, um, as you all know, we contract with the Eldorado Township, the Prospect Township, and then, uh, we have a, we provide for, uh, initial hazmat response for the county. And through those contracts, we brought in a little over $660,000. Um, over the past year, some of our initiatives is like a lot of everybody else. We did a lot of COVID preparation and preparing for response. We launched a firefighter essentials program. This is for our volunteer firefighters. Um, chiefs before me had required that our volunteers become a firefighter one certified before we could utilize them. That had turned off a lot of our volunteer, a lot of people from becoming volunteers because they couldn't do things. So we took that firefighter one, took the most important parts, and made our own fire academy. It was two weekends long, and we put, um, eight students and four volunteers to that. And then we, um, I think that also helped us increase that number you saw earlier, getting it up to the average of four personnel per response. So that's a good program that we launched. Um, we ordered a new command vehicle. Uh, we hired two new employees, Zach Lindsey and LJ Geist. And we placed, uh, pumper one in service. That's that military apparatus that got placed in service in January, I believe. While we had to cut back on certain items, some things that we couldn't was our, uh, maintenance program. We do have, uh, several qualified individuals that are very dedicated to our maintenance program, and they completed over 791 hours of in-house maintenance. I think I told you last year, I based this off of a lower figure of about, uh, shop fee of about $50 an hour. And based upon that $50 an hour, we saved over $40,000 in labor expenses. Due to COVID, we did cut back on our inspection program. We didn't feel right going in and exposing our firefighters, potentially taking them out of service or explo- or exposing our, our customers to anything we might have done. So we hit the high-hazard occupancies. We hit the occupancies that require inspection by the state and did those, and we did 295 inspections in 2020. We were able to get out and do our annual fire hydrant flow test. We did 701 of those, um, out of the 705 that are in the city. Um, the other four probably weren't done because they were prob- I mean, one, they weren't either, either functioning or they were out of service or something like that, so... Uh, public education is something else that suffered due to COVID. We weren't able to go out to the schools and do programs. We weren't able to reach out to people. So, um, we, we only had 79 contact hours of public education. And a lot of things that we did, we prepared a video that we released on social media for Fire Prevention Week to try to do something. And we had a couple of, uh, of things we put out on social media trying to do that public education, but our actual face-to-face contact hours were limited. We continued our program with, uh, Butler Community College and the student residence. This is a good opportunity for the students to learn side-by-side with firefighters, and it gives us manpower that we desperately need, so... This is another area where we were able to, uh, really capitalize on because we weren't able, we weren't out there doing inspections, we weren't out there necessarily doing public education. The guys did a lot of training. Um, you can see in these photos, we built some training props. We set up some hazmat equipment that we hadn't in a long time. And we had over 12,000 man out, total man-hours for the entire department in 2019. That's an increase of 20, over 2019 of over 6,700 hours. So the guys were able to get out and do a lot of training that we hadn't been able to do in the past. Um, again, most of this training was done in-house. Um, our more experienced, more qualified officers would teach the other members different subject areas. I discussed the essentials program that was done this year. Again, was a great benefit to the department and the city of Eldorado. And prior to the, the outbreak, we were able to send some members to the, uh, um, Kansas Chapter of International Association of Arson Investigators Symposium in Wichita. Um, some events that we did, we did a, a virtual MDA boot drive this year. Again, we put something out on social media trying to raise money for MDA like we do, we normally go out and collect for. Uh, we assisted in the playground installation at Quail Ridge Apartments for those, uh, children that live there at Quail Ridge. Um, we assisted in the placement of flags in the downtown corridor on Memorial Day. And then, uh, we, uh, we participated in a drive-through parade at Lake Point this year. Oh, and I, I missed one of the important things. We had a big hit this, uh, December with the, uh, Fire Truck and Santa Tour. Um, it's something we definitely plan on bringing back and hopefully starting a little earlier in December next year, so... It was very well received. So in the future, we're gonna continue to seek grant opportunities for equipment and services. We want to continue to improve our volunteer firefighter usage. I think, again, I think the essentials program has greatly increased our, our usage of our volunteers. We'd like to see them used even more. Um, we started out on a customer satisfaction survey-type program, and then COVID came out, so that's kind of stalled. We hope to get that more developed and get that out there a little bit better as, um, COVID winds down, hopefully. Um, I, we want to continue to provide training at the higher frequency and quality that we've seen in this last year, if possible. And then we're gonna work on stating an inspection schedule for occupancies where we stagger our inspections and we maybe don't get out and inspect every occupancy in Eldorado every year, but those ones that are high-hazard or a high threat, we'll get to every year. Whereas we get to like a regular business office where there's not that big of high hazard, maybe we hit them every three years or something like that, so... And with that, I would entertain any questions that you might have.
Chief, I want to say that I, the, uh, this fire trucks and Santa Claus tour was great. I've got a lot of feedback from that as well. I appreciate you guys doing that. Um, and I appreciate all the work you guys have put in. I think it's great you guys had opportunities for some additional training. Do you feel like the trade-off to be able to essentially increase your training hours by 100% was because of the time you spend on inspections and stuff, because that went down? I mean, because you worked more fires?
I think, I think part of that is that, and part of that is we limited getting our firefighters out to help protect them from being exposed and potentially losing their service. Idle firemen don't sit still very well, so they would go out and they would train when they couldn't do anything else, and they'd have that drive because they were in the station going to calls, and that was it. So they would gotta try to do that training on their own. While we had more free time, and that definitely did help, I think that drive, due to that idle time, also had a lot to do with it, so...
Well, hopefully you can continue, you know, even as we come out of the pandemic, you can continue finding more opportunities for training for your staff. I know that you guys focus a lot on that, which is important, but that professional development is, is crucial, I think, for, for them and their safety in the future as well. I appreciate all that you guys do, though.
Thank you.
The new garage doors really make it look nice back there.
Uh, w- we are very proud of the garage doors. We appreciate you guys, uh, letting us get those. And, um, I have had numerous comments myself about how much they have, uh, dressed up the department and how nice they look, so...
They're really nice.
You guys have anything else?
No other questions, thank you.
You've had that for Chief.
Thanks, Chief.
That's a great picture.
It is a great picture. Hello, Chief.
Hi, how are y'all today? Happy New Year.
Happy New Year to you.
All right, here we are again, the annual report for the police department. Uh, hold on, let me get this going here. I always like to put our department commitment on this first screen. The Eldorado Police Department is committed to providing a safe, livable community with a high quality of life by maintaining order, protecting persons and property with equal and consistent enforcement of the law. Uh, kinda echo what Chief Hag said, 2020 is a pretty difficult year for everyone, uh, because of the pandemic, uh, to say the least. Uh, it's created several challenges for the police department. Early on the pandemic, there were many unknowns, and on March 16th, 2020, Eldorado police officers were instructed to only make personal contact with individuals when absolutely necessary. The police department building was closed to the public, and the municipal court was postponed until further notice. Most citizen contacts were made by telephone whenever possible. Traffic stops were reserved for only blatant violations. Officers wrote citations instead of making arrests for most misdemeanor violations. Uh, the Butler County Jail was pretty much closed for a long period of time that we were asked not to bring people in unless, you know, it was a felony or a serious misdemeanor. On May 11th, 2020, the municipal court was reopened with very limited seating for social distancing. Police services, including traffic stops, begin to return to some sense of normal with precautions. Many miscellaneous calls are still being handled by telephone until the pandemic subsides. This is one of several bright spots that we had in 2020. The Eldorado High School case came out, and they took chalk and wrote all kinds of nice things out there in our parking lot, so, uh, we appreciated that. Uh, I don't have the photos. We actually had two or three different large groups come and pray for the police officers down on our front lawn. Uh, Pastor Count was part of one of the big groups. Uh, it was churches from here and over Wichita came, and it was, it was quite the blessing, and it, it made us feel really good. So, crime statistics, uh, a lot of them, a lot of the crimes went down. Uh, there's a few of them that jumped. I mean, the, the numbers are all relative, like arson. Uh, we had three in 2020. That's up 50%, but like I said, it's a pretty small number, but... I'll go through these just real quick. Uh, assaults were actually down 17%. It was 69. Burglaries were down 36%. Uh, counterfeit forgery was up 216%. We're getting a lot of counterfeit bills coming through. Uh, we had a call today, they took one up at, uh, motor vehicle office. The people were there, and they had no idea that these were counterfeit bills, but I think the ladies probably checked them with one of those markers or something like that, so... Uh, criminal damage was up 17%. Drug offenses were down 22%. Embezzlement, uh, is actually down to zero. Fraud, uh, was down 43%. Uh, kidnapping was down 100%. We actually had one the year before, so... Uh, larceny and theft was down 19%. Motor vehicle theft down 65%. Pornography cases down 33. Robbery is down 33%. Uh, sex offenses forced was actually up 15%. Uh, weapon law violations were no change. We had four last year as well as the year before. Uh, all other offenses, uh, were down by 26%. A total of 228. Bad checks went up a couple. Disorderly conduct was actually up by 75%. DUIs were down. Uh, family offenses, nonviolent, were down. Liquor law violations down. Runaways were actually up by 60%. And trespassing was down by 52%. So all in all, I think most of the stuff went down, except for some of the fraud-type things. Uh, I think a lot of that's attributed also to people who are just haven't been out and about as much probably with the COVID going on. Uh, 2020 cases and calls overview, the Eldorado Police Department investigated 1,823 cases as of, uh, 12/31 of 2020, which is a decrease of 360 cases as compared to the same date in 2019. Total number of incidents for the Eldorado Police Department in 2020, which includes cases, calls for service, traffic stops, et cetera, was 13,800. This is a decrease of about 2,456 incidents. 2020 NTN warrants, there's 2,375 notices appear in court with 2,875 charges. 302 off-truck route citations were issued. 161 warrants were issued by the municipal court in 20... Nah, that shouldn't be 2020. It's a typo there. And, uh, police officers with Eldorado Police Department have served 173 warrants in 2020. Throw code enforcement in here, the complaints, these were as of 12/4 when I did this PowerPoint presentation. She had 172 trash calls, 129 vehicles, 407 grass, 59 structure, 19 campers, four boats, four tree complaints, six site obstruction, seven complaints of bugs at buildings or residences, fence complaints, five, swimming pools, four, and trailers, six. Had a total of 871 code enforcement complaints, and total court cases were 503. Recruitment, job openings have been posted at over 758 colleges nationwide in what they call the handshake app. Openings advertised on Civic Plus and indeed via city website along with social media outlets. Uh, openings have been advertised on Kansas Peace Officers Association website. I actually talked with HR Haley here about a month ago and asked her to, to change the, uh, police application or that showed up on Civic Plus, because the one we had was pretty long. It took a long time to fill out, and a lot of other agencies took that long, forcing one out of Civic Plus and just put the same one they've got for everybody else. And as a result of that, uh, applications are starting to come in faster than, uh, they have been. I mean, we've had, oh, 15, 16, 17 just in the last couple, three weeks, and we didn't have that many in, you know, three or four months before, so... I think last time I looked, we had about 12 or 14 in the queue that will probably get invited and come to interviews, and I think that's the 14th of January is our next testing. These are two of our new officers, Gabe Higgins and Ryan Smith, were being sworn in right there by Tabitha. They both went to the academy for one week, and then they're on the Christmas break, so they're back working with us, and they go back Monday, week from today, so... So far, those two guys are working out really well. 2020 projects and goals. So in 2019, the Eldorado Police Department received a 2020 Edward Byrne Justice Assistant Grant amount of $34,399 for the purposes of establishing a crisis intervention team. Uh, the training was completed in September of 2020. Project is complete with only some auditing items to finish, and actually, those have been completed since I wrote this, so they're all done. Every officer at the Eldorado Police Department received 38 hours' training and was certified in CIT. This was a major task and accomplishment, and was the department's main goal for 2020. Uh, the CIT model is a collaborative approach to safely and effectively addressing the needs of persons with mental illness. I can tell you that since we've all got that training, it's been a valuable asset on the street. street already. I know three occasions just recently where the officer got there and saw what was going on. They called CIT, which got the other team members and called South Central Mental Health, and it's all seeming to work really good like it's supposed to, so it's a good asset for the community. We recently received a $1,000 community grant from Walmart for the purposes of continuing community policing and crime prevention type activities. This picture was a couple of weeks ago with, probably can't tell with a mask, but that's Jeremiah Zwill, the manager of local Walmart, so we're always glad to get that. So 2021 goals. One time permits, improve community relations with emphasis on crime prevention, community education, and citizen contacts. Each patrol shift, the investigation section, and the command staff have been tasked with developing and implementing a crime prevention presentation for the public in 2021. That was actually one of our 2020 goals that COVID really kept from happening, because we couldn't get out and get before people in the public, so we're going to try to get that done this year. If the, if the pandemic lasts too much longer, we may have to go to like a Zoom format or something via the internet to get it done, but we're going to get it done. You can follow us on Facebook at El Dorado Kansas Police Department and on Twitter at El Dorado Police. Thanks for your support, and I would stand for any questions you might have.
I just have a comment on the, I think the fact that we're down 22% on drug cases or arrests. I think that's great, because I think that had been on a lot of people's minds here the last several years, and that seems to be the one you hear about all the time.
Still a lot of work to be done, so as soon as we get staffed up, we'll, we'll try to get.
Well, yeah, to me, that's what makes it more impressive. I mean, I mean, with short staff and, so. Because I know they're, I know they're still out there hunting them.
Yeah.
So, anyway, I, I was impressed with that, that and 300 truck tickets.
We need to triple that up. Chief, I appreciate all the work that, that our police officers do, that your staff does, and to next point, I mean, those, the, the call numbers really are looking good. I mean, it's, it's always great to see a decrease in, in our crime statistics. It helps, it helps everyone in town, so.
Well, we appreciate all of you, appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Thank you. Next on the agenda is to set a public hearing for street improvement projects paving Ninth Avenue Gordy to Taylor.
Yes, so Mayor Commission, these next three items will be ones that we spoke about at two work sessions prior to the new year. That was initiating street improvements. And what this, what, what is before you this evening does is start the process. So tonight, you'll consider setting a public hearing, and this item before you right now is Ninth Avenue from Gordy to Taylor. All of those individuals that are part of that improvement district for this project will be notified, notified via letter of that meeting. Staff will meet with those folks as well, talk to them about the process. And for this project here, Ninth Avenue, you will hold that public hearing that's proposed for February 1st in this room to consider adopting a resolution on the viability of proceeding with the project. The estimated cost for the paving of Ninth Avenue is $1.244 million.
Does that get us past the railroad tracks?
Yes, so this will get us to the intersection of Taylor, which is the, the western street in front of the swimming pool. So right there past the gazebo, you know, the van shell, it'll just pave all the way to that intersection.
And the other question I had about that one was, I know we, we put the sidewalks in on Sixth Street. We had, we had the material to get it across the railroad tracks on Sixth Street, but there was a delay of some sort. Is that correct? Are we still waiting on those?
The, we were able to negotiate with BNSF on Sixth Avenue there and got that done. Union Pacific kind of held our feet to the fire and wanted the city to pay for a whole crossing at $153,000. Just to have that sidewalk go through that one block area. And when the total project, you know, that was a third of the total project cost just to get a six-foot panel put in there so the folks could walk across the Union Pacific tracks.
So are we going to have that same issue here with this project? We're going to have the same people, the same players involved?
This will be BNSF on Ninth Avenue.
Okay.
So there's no doubt, like we talked at the work session, it's going to take some time to get through the permitting and engineering involved, review level of BNSF.
This project doesn't include sidewalks either, is that right?
No. But we would accommodate a panel there through the railroad to allow that path, you know, stay passed.
Scott, you said that, and it says here on this deal, that the total cost is 1.244 million, almost 1.245. When you add up 737 and 144,000, there's about 300 and, what, 30,000 under that, so where's the other 300,000 got?
Of that, and... Of that, the total city at large cost, the 730, there's, there's a, we forgot to add another point here. So the city at large, our normal contributions to the project are estimated to be $737,000, saying like we would have done the Douglas Road and the others we're talking about this evening. The 144,518,70 you see in there is the city at largest property within the improvement district. And the other sentence that should have been added was that the improvement district, so these are the individuals that own property, not the city's property adjacent to the street improvements, is 507,974.
Oh, it's on that, okay, I see.
I apologize about that.
Yeah, so it's the 737 plus the 507. Of the 507, 144, that is the city's improvement district.
So this is, this is just a resolution to set the public hearing. This isn't us voting yea or nay on it, right?
Yeah, this sets a public hearing to get those individuals in. We, we have the letters ready to go, then we'll send them just tomorrow morning if, if it passes, and we'll encourage them to contact us via phone, email, come to the meeting if they're comfortable, Zoom, that capability, letting them aware of all of that. And then as well, staff would like to set up a meeting with and provide that public hearing to help answer any questions they may have about the process or the actual construction of the road. Able to help them with questions on breakdown of assessments, what that number means per month, that it's over 20 years. We, we add as much detail to these letters as we can, but, you know, sometimes it's hard to fully comprehend what the legal parts of this letter have to be in there and the stuff that you have.
If, when would this happen, this project happen, do you think? We're starting the process first of the year, what, what do you think?
Construction 2022.
That would be on all the projects that we're dealing with today?
The next, the next two that you'll have, I think we could get going quite a bit quicker, and we could see some utility relocates happening this summer, some storm sewer works and then other subsidiary work to the actual road construction in the fall of 2020.
Do you have a motion?
Which one are we doing?
We're on paving Ninth Avenue Gordy to Taylor right now.
Ninth Avenue, okay.
Agenda item number 14, or I'm sorry, 13.
2915, is that the resolution we're looking at? Okay, just, I move that resolution number 2915, a resolution calling for and providing for the giving of notice to a public hearing on the advisability of making of a certain internal improvement in the city of El Dorado, Kansas, under the provisions of KSA 12-6A01, et cetera. As amended and supplemented and provided for the giving of notice and said hearing paving improving and paving of Ninth Avenue.
That's a lot. I have a motion.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion or questions about this? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries 5-0. Agenda item number 14, set public hearings for street improvement projects paving Huntington Road and Simpson Road.
Yes, and this would be the improvement of Huntington from Fifth Avenue to Second Avenue, as well as Huntington Road, that's from Sixth Avenue to Second Avenue. Same process as the previous agenda item. We are asking that you hold the public hearing on, on this, as well as the following item here for February 15th. Total estimated cost on this project is $1,204,000.
This will finish township?
We will still have Norris Street out there. That is not there approved.
But is that one with the, the new addition that's going out there? Will they improve that road?
They, they'll go through the same process as, either that or we have the owners come and say, petition, please fix our road.
Do you have a motion on this one?
I move that resolution number 2916, a rev, a resolution calling and providing for the giving of notice from a public hearing on the viability of making of, of a certain internal improvement to the city of El Dorado, Kansas, under the provisions of KSA 12-6A01 et cetera. As amended and supplemented and providing for the giving of notice of said hearing paving improvements, paving of Huntington Road and Simpson Road.
I'll second it. I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries 5-0. Agenda item number 15, set public hearings for street improvement projects paving Fifth Avenue and school Huntington, Second Avenue, Fifth Avenue from school to Huntington, and Second Avenue from school to the diagonal.
Yes, this will be the project that ties Huntington and Simpson Road together. Functionally, they are two separate projects for the accounting purposes of it, so there will be individuals that have an assessment on Huntington Road as well as Second Avenue, so they'll be a participant in two projects. And this project will be designed, bid as one complete project. However, for accounting purposes in the official specials, we've set it up as two projects here on our books. So asking for the same on this, a public hearing for February 15th to hear from the residents and consider a resolution of the viability.
Do you have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, move that resolution number 2917, a resolution calling and providing for the giving of notice of a public hearing on the viability of the making of a certain internal improvement in the city of El Dorado, Kansas, under the provisions of KSA 12-6A01 et cetera. As amended and supplemented and provided for giving of notice for said hearing paving improvements, paving of Fifth Avenue and Second Avenue.
I'll second it. I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on this? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries 5-0. Agenda item number 16, the Evergy easement, wetlands and water reclamation facility.
Mayor Commission, Evergy currently owns and has, since the early 20s, a 50-foot easement through property owned by the city of El Dorado. Their existing transmission lines traverse across our property kind of in this manner. They are working towards a rebuild of that transmission line system, and have requested the city of El Dorado consider granting an additional easement. Today, the easement that exists is 55, 50 feet in width, and they're asking for a total of 125 feet in width. With that, they did make an offer for the city of $31,400 for compensation of that easement, and what we're asking you tonight is consider giving the city, or the mayor, to execute the grant of the easement.
So where, okay, so where does that?
It is right, so you see a tower right there?
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Okay? Our, our city property, let's see if I've got, yeah, I've got that later. The yellow shaded is city property. So basically, it's easement across here. You can see where the trees are all trimmed.
Yep, okay, so it just continues that.
There's some things, you know, as Douglas Road went through those improvements, Evergy bought some of these homes out in this area and are set to demolish them to make way for their transmission rebuild.
So eventually, they're going to be going through town with bigger towers?
It's, it's a semi-climate that exists through town today. You can see, goes on through Walmart's parking lot and then out to...
Probably goes clear to mid.
Their subdivision of the median, you know.
Yeah. And they're wanting to expand from 50 to 125 feet?
Correct, to give them, give them room in there to construct the new and to maintain it. The easement still allows us to lease it out for crops, like we do today, protect the sensitive buffers that we've created along the Warner River, the native vegetation strips to prevent erosion.
So it's 5,000 an acre and, uh, an average cost of an acre of land around here?
For crop land, you know, I'm not aware of pasture in behind, and, and they're talking for an easement, so a right to utilize the space above our, you know.
So what's the additional 2,500 for the row rate?
The right-of-way rate, that is just something they offer. It's, they offer a flat rate of 2,500, and on top of that, 5,000 per acre. When the city of El Dorado, when we negotiate either purchase right-of-way or easements, we start with what the county says the land is appraised at and divide up the total acreage and, and it's, it's, it's less, you know, typically a lot less than 5,000.
So I guess what I'm asking is this offer a decent offer?
It's more than fair.
Yeah.
Is it? Okay.
More than fair.
That's fine.
Do you have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to accept an offer from Evergy and to authorize the mayor to sign a grant of easement to Evergy for the purpose... for the purpose of constructing a transmission line across the owned property at the wetlands and water reclamation facility.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five oh. Agenda item number seventeen, Evergy, uh, no, application to rezone two two four two and two two seven eight Southeast Highway fifty-four.
Yes, so these current, these properties today are in our ETJ, um, so they're outside of the city limits, but where we control zoning jurisdiction, land use jurisdiction. Um, currently, the day subject properties are zoned for, um, manufactured mobile home park. The applicant is requesting to rezonate these to C one. The, um, uh, planning commission met on November seventeenth and voted to recommend the rezon seven zero. The C one fits with other uses in the area. The applicant plans to demolish the home and, and build some storage type facilities of the property. All of the construction, um, permitting and all that will go through the cabinet.
To the left of the yellow box, is that the church?
Um, up on here.
To the left of the, that's, that's at storage.
Yeah, that's storage. RV.
Yeah, RV, boat, camper stuff.
Is that the same guy? Is it, he just trying to expand over as the storage unit next to him?
You know, I'm, uh, I'm sure, sure.
Okay, I'm, that's no big deal, I'm just...
You can see my boat right there.
Well, that property there, where your, where your hand thing is, to the, to the right, is, is that the old Dale Service?
No, I'm not, I'm not sure either.
Yeah, because that's, looks like that's where the building was. I think it is, I think that's where Dale Service was. It doesn't matter.
All right, do we have a motion?
I move to approve case number two zero dash zero five dash REZ, requesting a rezoning of twenty-two forty-two and twenty-two seventy-eight Southeast Highway fifty-four to C one General District and that ordinance number G dash one three four two be approved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? We need a roll call.
Commissioner Madway.
Yes.
Pats on. Go ahead, Pat, sorry.
Oh, that's okay, you can do it.
Oh, hi, Tabitha.
Hi. Commissioner Wilkinson?
Yes.
Mayor Young?
Yes.
Commissioner Guthrie?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes. Motion carries five oh. Um, that's it for the regular agenda, so we'll move on to number eighteen, City Commission Advisory Board Updates. Commissioner Wilkinson, do you have anything tonight?
Uh, Parks and Rec debate via Zoom. We don't have to do Zoom anymore. Um, a couple of the members hadn't been there, so we brought them up to date on some of the items that were going, uh, Parks and Rec was looking at, such as the BMX track, track being discussed. Sports numbers are down, both for the, the kids and the adults. So they were going to extend the time to sign up for those, but just figured they'd go with what they had. And that was about it for our discussion.
Thank you.
Library hadn't met since our last meeting, so just happy new year, everybody.
Perfect.
I don't have anything to report.
No, um, haven't met with CTC yet, um. I don't have anything for tonight.
I don't have any updates, I just wanna echo the happy new year. We're kicking into twenty twenty-one, hopefully it's a better year for everyone in El Dorado. And, um, you know, we had presentations earlier from fire and police, and you'd always say again how much I appreciate all the work that, um, our, our first responders, fire, police, our healthcare professionals, and our community have done. Um, throughout twenty twenty, it's been, it's been really hectic. And I think oftentimes, um, you know, we talk about the work that fire, police, and our first responders do, um, but I also don't want to, uh, forget the work that our educators have done. It's been a very difficult year for them. I think that, um, they've certainly tried to, to make an environment suitable for our students. But I think the Person of the Year for twenty twenty should be, um, our students that have really suffered this year, and hopefully they can get back into a good, a good routine in twenty twenty-one. It's good for, it's not just good for our students themselves, especially, uh, our younger students in K twelve, K six specifically, but, um, it's also good for our economy to keep those kids in school, because right now, if kids aren't in school, then oftentimes parents can't work and, 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 uh, everything suffers, so. We really need to get our kids back going and, and hopefully, hopefully we're moving down the right track for that, so. Um, I appreciate the patience within our community. I feel like, um, I feel like the city of El Dorado and the citizens of El Dorado have dealt with twenty twenty pretty well, considering. So, um, I appreciate the, the, the kids and their patience and their parents, and our first responders and our teachers. So I'm gonna stop rambling and let David take it from here, City Managers Report.
Just a few things to make the mission in the public, uh, as of, uh, December, we had a sales tax, uh, of two hundred and forty thousand dollars. But the bigger news is that for the third consecutive year, the city broke its sales tax record, um, which was set prior to two years. So, uh, last year, the city brought in two point six seven eight million dollars. This year, we brought in two point six eight three million dollars. So we broke the record by almost six thousand dollars. Thank you for shopping more. Um, beginning today, the activity center is open to the public with modified hours. The center will be open from three to eight PM on Monday, Tuesday, and Thursday, three to nine PM on Wednesday, three to five PM on Friday, and one to five PM on Sunday. The center will be closed on Saturdays, and so those, those hours are for every Monday, Wednesday, etc. So not just this one coming up. Um, face coverings and masks are required unless actively participating in an activity in the facility will be closed on all, uh, El Dorado High School home basketball game dates. Please call three two two seventy-four hundred for court availability. City offices will be closed on January eighteenth for Martin Luther King Junior Day. Monday's trash route, as a result, will be collected on Tuesday, and Tuesday's trash route will be collected on Wednesday. There will be no change to the Thursday or Friday rounds. Uh, as a result, also at Martin Luther King Junior Day, the city commission meeting scheduled for, uh, June, January eighteenth will be rescheduled to June, I'm sorry, Tuesday, January nineteenth, uh, again due to the holiday. And finally, I didn't bring with me, but all residents will be receiving a twenty twenty-one trash schedule magnet and an informational flyer with city department information in the mail within the next week or so. We encourage folks to put that magnet on their fridge, and then when the holiday comes up, you can just check it out and it'll tell you, uh, how your trash route may be affected by the, uh, the holiday, um, as well as the informational flyer will contain contact information for departments, um, so that folks can kind of know which department they need to call for different services and city offers. So look for your mail, look in your mailbox, and if you don't get one, please give us a shout, and we'll be sure you get one.
Got a quick question, so you said that the sales tax collected this year was, broke all the records before, so we're continuing to move up, and we didn't have a turnaround this year, we didn't have, so this was people shopping locally. That's the opposite of a turnaround.
Yeah, exactly.
Really?
Yeah, no, this was people shopping locally, which is important, so. I think it's a great number and a great, uh, great thing for, for our local businesses to, to get out there and, and thank our customers, because we do have great local businesses that we can shop at, so it's great news.
Do I have a motion or adjourn?
I move away adjourned.
Motion and second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five oh, have a good night.